All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to convene the November 21 meeting of our Buchanan and Sanitary Board. It's four o'clock. And I would ask that you join with me in our traditional moment of silent reflection, sending our best God's voices and prayers to those who need the most. Mr. Tyler Beatty, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance this afternoon?
(Inaudible)
I just love those pregnant pause practical jokers. Thanks a lot, Tyler. Starting off on good footing. All right, folks, we do, Tyler is with us from J.F. Allen. Do you want to address the board, or do you just want to weigh in later on?
I'll weigh in later on, yeah. Reform was, huh?
Yeah. Financial report, Ambie Jenkins. Ambie, you want to tell us if we can go on for another month? How's the October financials looking?
Well, it's good as usual. So, on your second page, you'll have your balances for the month of October. Your money market and checking are $668,034, and your CDs remain the same. As you can see, those are always the same. Your revenues and expenditures for the month of October, you had $224,197 in revenues, and you had $155,007 in expenses. So, more in revenues, $69,000, than you had in expenses. So, as usual, you're doing well so far. Your disbursements for the month of October, the only thing really worth noting is we spent $6,600 for some GPS equipment, and $1,200 for some pipe, restocking the pipe field, and polymer, that's a chemical, at $1,500. So, those were your expenses that are probably at least worth noting. The other thing that you have in your packet is the financial statement for the year ending June 30, 2018. Richard Trent, I've worked with Richard Trent for, you know, since July, and he's worked on all of our funds, general funds, cold, unsoldated sanitary waterways. And he's finished up sanitary, so you can see it's attached, and he's really good, puts these notes right next to it about what happened. He's got June 30 of 19, and he has June 30 of 18 there for a comparison. And you're doing well. I mean, you've met both the bond requirements and the PSC requirements, so we have, you know, funds set aside, and we've met the bond requirements with cash flow and our depreciation. I don't really know anything unusual, I mean unusual, other than you came out of, that's a positive at the end of the year. We did have some OPEB reporting that the auditor did put back on us this year. They said that since we have retirees, just a handful, that participate in PEIA, we do have to count those as OPEB liabilities, although they're not as large as if all of our employees were a hundred. So, those are on there this year, but they wanted to sign us. Again, you can review it. If you have any questions about anything in there, I can try to help, or if I don't know the answer, I'll get Richard Trent to help with the answer to that. But, your finances look good. Let's see, the other thing, our PSC report, we've had to have a couple extensions to get that filed, because we'd have so many other things to do, and so this is unusual. But it's ready to file now. I just received the final product today, after exchanging back and forth between myself and Mr. Trent. We'll be submitting that probably tomorrow to the Public Service Commission. And then I'll email you a copy of it, a paper copy, several pages, so I can email you a copy of it, so you can see it. And those are always on the website of Public Service Commission, if anybody wants to look at them.
Ambie, for those that normally don't come to a sewer board meeting, we have long had a requirement imposed by the state of West Virginia that three or four years ago we weren't in compliance with, which was to maintain 12.5% of our annual operating budget in a reserve account. And when you say we now satisfy that PSC requirement-
Yes, we have. We have that part of it.
...with that $314,000, and we have, in our CDs, we have now met that criteria loosely required by the Western Virginia-
It's been several years since we've been able to do that, so we actually are setting funds aside for any unforeseen emergencies that we might have.
Well, our compliments to Mrs. Jenkins for reminding us about those requirements periodically, and especially to the board for approving, pulling money out of operating funds to put in that reserve account. Just so we're clear about the purpose of a reserve account, we had a situation just a few years ago, where we had a near catastrophic failure with a pump station, and had to go beg and borrow down in Charleston to get a couple hundred thousand dollars to make emergency repairs, actually to re-apply a new sewer pump station down by West Virginia, Westlake College. And it was, it was a little dicey there for a few days, wasn't it, Sam? But anyway, we've got that reserve account now, and it's basically the equivalent of our rainy day fund. If we have an emergency, we have funds to draw upon. You heard Mrs. Jenkins talk about our October financials. You also heard her reference our internal auditor, Richard Trent's year-ending, fiscal year-ending June 30 report. I would entertain a motion that we approve all of those financial-
Motion, I second.
A motion by Mr. Frye and a second by Mr. Loftus. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign motion carries. Thanks, Ambie. Department report. Buck, I'll let you start in on it, and Sam can weigh in wherever he chooses as well.
Well, the West 33 extension, north and south, you know, I don't have a lot to say about that. I thought maybe other people would want to talk about that.
Okay. So, am I one of the other people?
Yes.
Well, the past two months, as everyone knows, there's been issues that have been discussed before the Upshur County Commission concerning the possibility, the prospect, of reassigning some of the city of Buchanan's utility territory, in the case of sewer, to the Tenertown Public Service District. And we have taken a very strong position, both as a board and as a city council, in opposition to those efforts. We have had more recent conversations with certain of the commissioners. We have had more recent conversations with the primary developer, on both the north side and the south side of Route 33 West. And we're optimistic, we're exchanging ideas for funding, and trying to reach numbers that we might agree upon. Just earlier today, in fact, we received a transmittal, a proposal that's been submitted on behalf of J.F. Allen, that by implication also involves the Marx and Shaw's, and we're going to be evaluating that position. Since we just received it today, other than providing copies very soon to the members of the board to reflect upon as we think forward to our December 19 meeting, we would have it on our agenda to take action to possibly commence projects as early as spring of I believe, it is my thinking, and Tyler Beatty is here on behalf of J.F. Allen, he can weigh in accordingly, but I think that we're going to get these utility issues resolved with the developers and the sanitary board, and the developers and the water board coming together, figuring out the formula to realize how we're going to finance and fund projects. We've been pretty steadfast in our position that if we get the financing lined up, that we would begin the north side sewer project about March 1. It might be February 27, or it might be March 12, but about the 1st of March. And we are starting the process to finalize plans, and to apply for permitting, and to secure any additional rights-of-way that we need, to create a very sound project that we believe we could have completed by November, perhaps earlier, of 2020. That's on the north side. Sam, Buck, Jerry, Jay, anybody from the, I'm just a dopey lawyer, who just said a whole bunch of things about plans and specs and rights-of-ways and everything else, so maybe some of you other guys want to weigh in and either tell the press, since they're all here, that I'm full of beans, or that, yeah, that's generally right.
Well, I'd comment, and I think what you said reflects what our position has been on the north side. We're prepared to proceed with that project. And of course, as far as the sewer department, that's Buck's decision, but as far as the project is concerned, I think that we're prepared. Over the course of the next month, two months, I would expect that we'll submit plans to the health department for permit, and do whatever other permitting is required, and be prepared to start sometime early in the new year, at least on the north side.
So, I think you've said exactly that.
Yeah.
Jerry, anything you want to add to-
My addition would be that I'd ask, and again, you, I shared that same email with all the players here from Tyler earlier, as to their proposal, and I'd ask him to put it in, a written proposal, which I believe he has, deliver it to both boards, just like you said, for review for the board, and then to have that discussion back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, this is, of course, just exactly what Sam said. What we've been working towards for several years is to get something on the table, and let the boards take a look at it, and then, you know, I'm sure they're going to be bannered back and forth before we reach a concrete agreement on moving forward, but this is the first step in getting there. So, I think Tyler's prepared to present all the comments.
To be clear, the north side project, and we're talking earlier, a year ago, the sanitary board approved going forth with the north side sewer-only project. The water on the north side is currently part of the Hodgesville Public Service District territory. But from the sewer perspective, the project was evaluated at being about $300,000. And the first $100,000 was very, I think generously committed by the board to kind of get the project going, as a good safe sign to the folks that were located on the north side that we wanted to help realize sewer out there. So, we aren't ready to comment on a project that would likely occur during the 2021 construction season, that would realize both sewer and water on the south side of Route 33. We're still entertaining the numbers that, again, were just shared with us earlier today, a proposal by J.F. Allen, and it's not mature. We just got it this morning. We couldn't put it on the agenda. But we will send the letter to the board members, both water and sanitary, so that during the December meetings, we can reflect upon and respond to their proposal. Does that sound fair enough?
Is that, what's the timeframe on the south side?
South side, if the project would be a go, we would certainly go forth with permitting and rights-of-ways and all that good stuff, but that would be during the 2021 construction season.
What about-
I think our intention would be is that by this time in 2021, we would have complete water and sewer service to both sides, north and south, on Route 33.
And there's the-
What about under the, for lack of a better term, the J.F. Allen proposal? What's the timeframe on that?
We'd want to install 2020.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we-
On the south side?
Yeah, I mean, if you could get permits and everything, you could go through, but, I mean, you know, manholes are set out there, I think, with pipe and stuff. I think it's a possible 2020 project.
Well, I wasn't trying to put all the details about your letter out there, since we can't entertain it yet.
Yeah.
But if there's a cooperative kind of a discharge, maybe that's a bad verbiage to use, a cooperative effort in the construction, the installation of the lines, it's possible that we could do the project together. I mean, you guys have been known to put in a water or sewer line here, there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's been part of the conversations over the last several months, and maybe over the last couple of years, that we would be amenable to an alternative agreement with J.F. Allen. And if we were able to accomplish an alternative agreement, because we're not, and part of the policy for an alternative agreement would be our inability to deliver in the right timeframe, which if we're committed to the north side, we really can't do the north and the south side in the same construction season.
Unless we contracted it out, which would add cost to the project, because we don't work for profit, but any contractor would, unless the contractor happens to be the developer that's trying to realize the utilities, right?
Which is the purpose of an alternative agreement. So, but that offer has been out there over the last several months.
Yeah.
Or part of the discussion, at least, so.
We're optimistic that the north side, we can handle exclusively, and have it completed by this time in 2020. And that the south side, we will try to expedite in collaboration, once we've reached an accord with the developers on the south side. We're not there yet, but once we do, we would start fast-tracking the permitting process and rights-of-ways and all that stuff. And the way this usually works, Sam, Jay, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there would be inspection, monitoring of the installation by the developers, and then at a point, I think it's a year after the fact, we accept formal dedication of the utilities as part of our systems. Is that a correct synopsis of the way that typically works?
Generally so. I mean, it would be our design, and we would inspect it in accordance with our design and our permits.
Sure.
And, but the developer would be responsible for the actual construction. And I think that's an accepted Public Service Commission approach to projects, depending on the utilities' policy for accepting alternative agreements.
Sure. Jerry, you might, I don't want to revisit stuff that's already been talked about during the past several weeks, but there are additional residential phases, particularly for sewer, that would be contemplated in the years to come.
That was one of the things Jay and I just had a little side conversation about, was clarification on the north side sewer. The north side sewer that this board has approved and proposed goes only to quarter-age tire.
Right.
That's where it would end, that's where this phase would be on this project.
And no legs off of it, right? Yeah.
But we would size the project in such a way so that these residential spurs could ultimately be realized.
In the future, and there has been, you know, we, and part of our investigation in dealing with the proposed project from the Public Service District, one of the things the city took responsibility in doing was to do a survey, that Jay can pop the numbers in, and found that most of the interest in sewer service on the residential side came from the Lawrence area, and not so much off of these spur routes-
Right.
-that we're talking about, which would be Bridge Run and Red Rock Run. So, but yes, to clarify, there could, there would be additional projects that could be in the future to serve residential areas off of this line.
Jay, anything to add to any of that?
I think everybody's covered it. I mean, I just wanted to make, and that's what Jerry mentioned, that little sidebar, that everybody is under the understanding that, you know, only nine to 11 commercial and residential customers, you know, would be served with this Phase One, what we're calling Phase One North.
Sure.
And then we would spur out in the future as that demand changes.
I would be remiss in case folks are late to the table on some of the dynamics with these conversations, and they've been mostly good conversations during the past two months. We did a couple of things as a city, and as a sanitary board, and to some extent as a water board. We reached out to the residents through a survey, every single resident, I'm not talking about the 11 mostly commercial folks, right to the immediate north of 33 West, but the residents that live up the various little hollers out there. And of all of them who were surveyed, the return of the quantity of folks, the percentage of folks that point-blank said, "Yeah, we want sewage," was only about 24%. So, the other thing that we did, we've worked with Chris Garrett, who's the Upshur County sanitarian, who we've had a very good relationship with on a number of fronts, both the general fund, water boards, sanitary board, and asked him to weigh in, from the sanitarian's perspective, about concerns that he had observed, or not observed, with failed airator and septic systems in the residential areas out there. And he reported that there were no concerns. And in fact, many of those residents have extended thousands upon thousands of dollars to realize the good treatment of their sewage that they have right now. That's not to say that those systems last forever, just like our own systems don't last forever. But you can imagine if somebody just three, four, five years ago put 10,000 or 12,000 bucks in an airator system, to then all of a sudden say, "How much are you going to charge me to pass the hat, to contribute to this project?" So, it's, there are no exigent circumstances, there are no emergencies that need debated relative to any of these sewer areas. Chris would tell you that if he was here, so not to speak for Chris Garrett. So, gentlemen of the board, I know Phil wasn't at the last meeting. A lot's gone on in the last six, eight weeks, as we've tried to wrestle through these projects. Do you all have any questions or comments for any of the folks here, our own in-house staff, or Tyler with J.F. Allen?
I got a question. One of the nine property owners, and we discussed the surcharge, and do we actually know how it's going to work yet? Because I had a couple. You know, we own like four pieces of property, one building. And the same thing with Dave Anderson, he owns two pieces of property, and my understatement is it's going to run to his second piece of property? Is he going to be two surcharges? I mean, I think their, what my understatement is only going to be nine, but I just wanted clarity.
Have we made that specific determination yet as to what the monthly allocation would be?
What we did was identify the nine potential customers.
Sometimes it's 11.
Yeah, it's nine. And there doesn't, that does not seem equitable to divide it up nine ways, because of either water use or size of property, but we really haven't taken it further than that.
Tyler, I think you know that our last conversation, I'm not telling tales out of school, that had it been equal, and if we financed it over a 20-year period of time, and all things being equal, that there weren't new players coming along and wanting to participate, because that would shorten the period of the financing with the surcharge model, I believe we were looking at about $112 a month in addition to the regular monthly sewer bill. So, your question is, is it 112, or is it 237, or what's the magical number? And I don't, I don't think we're ready to give a precise magical number, because one of the methods of allocating the surcharge could depend upon how big each of these properties served are going to be.
Well, and wasn't it also discussed that if more players come onboard, the actual amount wouldn't change, but the timeframe in which the amount is paid would change?
The term of the surcharge would be reduced. We are just on the cusp of retiring the breast-and-forum surcharge that was put in place about 20 years ago. And, so anyway, so I hate to, I'm not intentionally being evasive, but the bright number guys are still putting the pencil to things. So, we'll, as we continue these conversations about things with the south side, we'll have something to you soon for the company to consider. Is that a fair statement?
And those numbers actually also have to be presented to Public Service Commission for the first one. And so, when we're ready to do that, then, of course, those will be made.
But we really don't know yet whether you're going to base on usage divided by nine, or-
Sam has dissuaded us from basing it upon usage.
Well, certainly from using the, just the base number of customers, because you have a property, a small property with small water use compared to a larger property with opportunity for subdivision maybe, and poor property with a lot of water use.
There are other variables to consider, all things being equal. Let's say that you have a substantial property owner who's kind of ambivalent about getting sewer, and you got a smaller property owner that's really, gee, I want this sewer and I need it yesterday. They might be, if we were doing the pass-the-hat model, as opposed to the surcharge model, they might invest more in the pass-the-hat model. But that was not universally, anyway, well-received by the developers on the north side. So, that's when we evolved from the annexation model to the pass-the-hat model, both of which were offered up early on, to now this surcharge model. So, but even within the surcharge model, there's probably three, or four, or five different ways that we could try to be as equitable as we can in allocating who's paying what per month on the surcharge basis. Am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, I think so.
So, let's, give us, I can tell you, with next week being deer hunting week, there's a, I'll be about the only guy working next week. So, give us, give us a couple weeks to get some numbers back to you. But, anyway, does that sound fair?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, somehow we were the lead, so I've talked to Dave Anderson, the verse five, well, and they all keep asking me, I'm like, ah, right now it's divided by nine, I don't know.
And if, I suppose if all nine property owners all said, "Yeah, that's all, that's all fine and swell by us," then it would be that, you know, 112 a month would do it.
But the amount of money was going to be the same either way?
Yeah.
Surcharge or-
I mean, with it divided equally among the parties, and when we made the offer of $200,000 and the players come up with 200,000, which is the pass the hat kind of proposal, the expectation was to provide that pretty much equally, which was a little over $20,000 a piece. So, if you did the surcharge the same way, each, each party was going to be contributing 20,000. And given issues with individual systems and development potential, maybe $20,000 is not a terrible number to be talking about to, to get sewer service.
Yeah.
But I think there's still purpose in, in looking at other ways to divide that cost, depending on property use and water consumption and development potential-
Sure.
-size of property. But you still might come back to, you've got nine players.
Yeah.
So, so we're clear. Let's say somebody's got a one-acre lot that's already maxed out with what improvements could be on this one acre combination of a building and parking lot or whatever. Then you got somebody else with 40 acres that could potentially have 20, 30 different things on that property. Should the 40-acre lot owner pay the same as the one-acre lot person? Now, if the one-acre lot person and all the folks in between say, "Oh, yeah, that's perfectly fine by us," well, then that becomes a moot point, I guess. We can all move on with, so that's, that's kind of where we are. We just, we just have to be sure that we're interacting transparently and ethically with all of the, all of the folks.
I mean, are you, I guess, are you guys in contact with all nine to see if they're okay or not okay, or are you just coming up with an idea to see?
I, I think most of the conversation, as I understand it, Dave, Dave Anderson has been in contact with us, although not in the last couple of days or couple of weeks, to my knowledge.
Right.
It's primarily with you all and the Shaws. And, yeah, the Shaws on the South Side, they don't have anything on the North Side. The, the interesting thing about your company is that you have interest on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we, we, we get it, and-
Obviously, I understand this outside of another talk again itself.
Yeah, yeah. And we want you to be successful on both sides.
Yeah, yeah. I just was kind of curious about the North Side. I mean, I've talked to, uh, the Dave, and I just talked to him two days ago.
Yeah.
And so, I've talked to him, and he's talked to Way Wholness, and then we talked to Vers Five, and so, but they all kind of just keep asking me, "How is this going to be broke up?" Like, I don't know, I keep emailing them.
At the Stocker Elimination Dinner just a week before last, Dave sought me out and said, "We're still, we still want our sewage." I said, "Well, we're, we're trying to work that out. We're, we're still talking." So, but I think we're, we're what, we're, we've evolved to a much better place than where we were this time last month. And we're highly optimistic that we'll be able to pull this off and come together. And there are particulars that will need to be digested and shared with all of the players on the North Side, but we're, we're going to do that right soon.
Do you think by December 19th, you'll be able to tell me how, how it's going to be split?
I think that's a very fair statement. We would want to have those numbers for the board to consider, certainly by then.
Okay.
So, we, whatever date prior to that, that we have some, some numbers to, to share, you'll be the first.
All right. Thank you.
Or the second, you know, explain it to me. Does that sound fair, everybody? Am I, am I misstating anything? I don't want to, it's like, oh, boy, that guy went out on a limb and he's, he sawed it off in back of us. Everybody's on board, Jerry, Sam, is that Buck? Think we can pull this off?
We'd love to start digging.
Okay. There you have it.
March.
They got itchy digging figures, ready to, ready to roll. You're welcome to stick around, Tom. I don't know if we got any more Route 33 West stuff, but you're, you're welcome to participate. Buck, what else you got for us as far as department report?
Well, the line crew. Brian's crew has finished up the long straight run. He's cleared up the road.
And this is on CJ Martin's property?
Yeah. And we have the right-of-way from the overall, we probably are actually on him just a touch now. We got a quote for the board, or out of CJ's, and it's $200 a foot. And it'll be $225 a foot if they would happen to hit rock.
Okay.
And that's from Hall's contrasting. And we've actually scheduled it for December the 4th to do the board.
Sneaking right up.
So, we're really trying to make this job happen.
CJ's anxious to, but spending a thousand bucks a month to-
He is.
-transport his sewage, Jay?
Yeah, actually, Donnie and CJ are really good buddies, and CJ commented, "I love shooting this guy up the road."
Yeah.
"I can see things happening." So, that seems to be going good. Kevin's group, they finished up the sanitary sewer there on Spring Street. And that's pretty much other than two complaints and stuff.
And now they're working on the storm sewer part.
They are.
Yeah.
And I was going to do that down under the storm.
Oh, okay, under the storm sewer. Get the cart ahead of the horse, bud. I get so excited when I see, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. So, that's all I have for the line crew.
Okay.
Plan operations, normal routine for these guys. All of the testing are within limits. And I kind of wanted to do a little update on the UVs. They, our new UV unit seems to be just working great.
Yeah.
We've made a few little changes to it, but to this point, we're very happy with it.
Sure.
Okay. Holbrook Sewer, Bonnie, somehow they built a building on top of our sewer line.
Yeah.
And that was back in Razz's days, and he talked to them about it, and I think that things kind of-
The discussion didn't go well.
And we were wondering, you know, where do we go from here?
Yeah.
Do we just wait until we have a problem and then deal with it?
Wondering.
Do we try to, you know, what are we supposed to do? Texts these things, wanted me to bring this up?
Do you have a notion of what we should do?
Tom and I, Tom and I, I just, I just talked to Tom a little bit about it. That was kind of, as Buck said, we, we met out there, it was really contentious at the time.
And here's the, I can, so here's the, here's the rub on the dispute. There's a, there's a 411, or, sorry, 611, 811 call that was put in, and for whatever reason, facts of which are in dispute, they built the building after making an 811 call. They think, or at least their attorney is arguing, that, that 811 gives them a safe harbor for purposes of encroaching on a right-of-way, which is baloney.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just call it what it is. It's baloney. We were, we had discussions, this is a couple of years ago, you know, with this plan. I think when there was transition and Razz left there, it was, that kind of got, I think that was kind of lost in, in the handoff on everything. And, and it's never really kind of left the back of my mind that we would have to revisit this someday. But essentially, what we're dealing with is, is a situation where, where those property owners are encroaching on the city's sewer line right-of-way. And, and we have to reach a resolution of that issue, one way or the other. And, and whether it's through relocating the line or relocating the building, I mean, one thing has to move at some point.
I think, I think though, as far as, correct me, Buck, if I'm wrong, that we, we would certainly, if we just had an agreement, written agreement with the property owner, that maybe follow, if the property was sold, that if there was ever a problem with that line, that we'd-
Alternative.
Alternative right-of-way, be able to fix the problem and possibly-
Contact us, yeah, if you know one.
At a shared cost.
Yes, a shared cost for the relocation. But Buck and I thought, this isn't the only area that we have. This is, it's the only area that, since kind of these players have been involved, that we've allowed it to happen, you know, without catching it before it happened.
The, part of the contention was around that, with the property owner's liability for some of the cost for relocation. That's, that's really where the discussions got hung up last time. So, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're going to reach that they're going to consent to, to assume responsibility without some kind of declaratory action on the part of the court, but-
And this is a garage.
Yes. It's a heavy, it's more than, it's a, it's a commercial garage.
Yeah.
And poured concrete floor and, you know, or concrete heated poured concrete. Well, it's, it's a very substantial construction.
Well, let's be clear that our well-defined right-of-way-
Oh, we-
-is not negated by their-
Calling 811.
-misreliance on a, call it 811.
Yeah.
And it, it is what it is, and the line is, has long been where it is. It's-
Well, and it's, and, and its location is easily discernible from the property, because you've got a manhole on one end of, on the one side of the property, you've got a manhole on the other side of the property, and the line is a straight line between those two points, and it, it built the building right over that, that line.
If you want to take a crack, a couple of, three years after the fact, and reach back out to the hits, and attempt to negotiate something that would be sort of an emergency alternative, if there were problems with that line, that's fine.
I would do so.
But our intention is to do nothing. I, I think we come from a position of complete strength. I mean, they're, they're going to be the ones wanting this problem fixed if there is a problem.
It's an encroachment, and, and they can't ever claim adverse possession against governmental entities, so it's not like that our right-of-way is subject to extinguishment at all.
Put the depth of the line underneath the building.
It's not very deep.
About four feet. Yeah, four, four to five feet. And, and their 811 call, their misutility, was a little misleading to us. Now, not that they were inaccurate what they said, but they said they were going to do construction, and it was going to be a couple of feet deep. And I think our interpretation of that was-
Were four or five feet deep, yeah.
It's not an issue.
Well, and the purpose of misutility is to, is to mitigate damage to lines, not encroachment on, on rights-of-way. I mean, they're completely different issues.
Is there any chance that, that, that that construction may cause trouble with the line in the future?
Well, they missed it with their poles. It's a pole building. They, they had dogger holes, so, good part is it was more than, well, the bad part is it was more than two feet deep. In order to put the poles in, the good thing is they did miss the line with, with all the holes there, it seems to.
As far as we know.
Hasn't backed up so far, anyway.
Issues would have shown up if there had been damage to, to the sewer. It seemed like that's relatively unlikely, but-
Would it be prudent to run the camera down that length and just confirm that there's been no damage as part of the process?
If the camera that we have can, would be effective in that line, and I'm not, I'm not too sure that it, that it would.
Four feet was, that'll support the weight, but, but the problem about it is if you let this go and go and go, the issue will become bigger down the road.
I doubt that there's a pole right over the sewer.
No.
And, and so, the weight won't, won't be an issue. But yes, I agree, absolutely. If 20 years from now, we have to replace that line and want to go in the same place, you can. And then, then it's, nobody remembers that it was put there improperly.
Well, you'll still remember.
Probably.
That might be coming up on 70 years or something.
Pointing 75.
Well, let's, let's let Tom take a crack at a letter that we can look at before we send it. I'm not, none of us are trying to re-agitate the other side, but it's something we need to all be mindful of if there's an issue with it. Okay, how about the combined sewer overflow stuff? What, what do you got to say about that, Mr. Shambleson?
Let's go. I heard rumors-
Uh-oh.
-that they might be trying to sell Holbrooks and maybe some property up there.
That's, that is what has, Jim, that is what has brought this issue back up again, that, that possibility. That's why, that's why it has bubbled up again.
That's why it would be good to get an agreement with the hits before they sell.
And they would run with the land, but-
Yeah, right.
Yeah. A lot of good choice bubble up. But, I mean, our rights-
These are not good bubbles, Gady.
Our rights survive any conveyance of property, I mean, you know.
Let's, let's try to work it out.
On our CSAs, we don't have anything to report.
Okay, that's good, right?
Yes, that's wonderful.
What about the pump stations?
Okay, pump stations. We wanted to let the board know that we still have Deanville ahead of us. We're, we still want to do that project since we can get it worked out that we can do that. We would still like to do that. We've been having some problems with our East Main Street pump station control panel. This control panel was a triplex, and through the years, we changed it to a duplex, and we have two pumps in there now. And it was put in there in 78, something like that.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-seven. Eighty-six, eighty-seven. And we're getting lots of corrosion, lots of rust in the box. And we, we plan on looking to maybe put a new control panel in there.
Okay.
And I think that's just the maintenance issue or we've had the issues.
Do you have an idea of when that's going to take place, Buck? I, I ask because the electricians that, you know, did the study for the FEMA grant, said that they would not be able to make any improvements in that control panel until that issue is corrected against electrical codes.
I think we'll be done it very soon, I mean, with that.
I mean, within the next two years.
I think we'll be done a lot sooner than that.
Okay, because that's when the grants run out, you know, and that's when we were planning on working on, you know, those, Grant Two is the, all the generators and pump stations and manual transfer switches, and, and it's mainly concentrating on the sanitary sewer side. And, and they had expressed their concerns in that they would not be able to work in those control panels, even with new equipment and retrofit controls, without that, the control panel blocks, the enclosure being addressed.
I'm glad you brought that up, because after we do East Main, then I think we'll want to do a lot. That used to be a triplex as well. It's getting old. You know, there's issues in there that if we didn't have a really, really good maintenance staff, staff, you know, these things might not run. It is just come time we do, we need to uprange some of our electric controls.
Yeah.
They were a mess from the beginning, and they're kind of dangerous.
Could be, yes.
Have 480 volt power in there, and there's a lot of wiring that's-
Ain't kind of dangerous, that's, it's dangerous.
You don't want to touch them too hard.
Or too long.
If you can get away from them.
Actually, of course, thanks to your pure within one inch of it, it's safe touching it.
That's close, huh?
Close to that, I bet.
Yeah. So, thank you, Jay.
Do you need a new tracker, Buck?
We do.
Is this something that we have already budgeted for, or is Ambi going to start crying? She was just bragging about, "Finances are looking great."
Well, I talked-
Could you leave it on, while I'm, I mean?
I mentioned this to Ambi.
You budgeted for, but then you decided to go out on 33, so.
Go on 33, but I was texted, babe.
I think we budgeted like 165, wasn't it, for our new tracker this year? Ambi asked me to, you know, to wait till we got through the year a little bit, but we would like to make this purchase within, you know, by June 30th of this coming year. And it'll take a few months to make all this happen. And I was just, I was hoping you would give me the okay to start to-
Prepare some bid documents and all.
I thought you were going to come tell us there were some Black Friday deals here.
Now, you're replacing that with a 1997 model?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
That's the one we'll be replacing.
So, I'll repeat what I said. Get what you need this time, because you see how long that one went out.
Yes. We have a 2001 and a 96 right now.
That'll take you right up to about retirement time if we get 24 years out of this next one.
Just about.
Yeah.
Just about.
Yeah. Not Sam, but Buck.
That's almost to the point of not being able to get parts.
But you want to point out that you're wanting to keep that old one.
We do. We want to keep that one to, you know, use the hammer on it. We'd hate to put a hammer on it, but they wouldn't beat the bushings out of it. So, I think we'd want to keep it till we had a major issue with it or something like that.
I mean, it's most valuable to us, fair statement. I mean, it's not like you'd get a whole lot out of it if you tried to sell it to somebody else.
And if something major happens to it, you know, it's going to be a boat anchor, it's not going to be anything worth anything to resell.
So, Mr. Samples is requesting to start the process to bid a new TracO, since we've gotten 23 going on 24 years out of the last one. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion made.
He'd be permitted, he'd be permitted to do that. A motion by Mr. Frye.
Second.
A second by Mr. Loftus, that we start this process. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. All right, Buck. Vaccination hepatitis A and B provided to employees.
Okay, we have always got all of our employees to shot, the shots, the A and the B shot. And Ambi wanted me to mention, we sometimes have part-time employees, and I feel like we should get them to shots as well. I mean, the environment they have to work in.
We're not talking a whole lot, are we?
A hundred bucks a shot, right?
Yeah, 117.
117.
And my concern was like, you know, is there a timeframe for which working force to be eligible for these shots? Is it going to be somebody that works a week when we send them out? You see what I'm saying? I kind of run into that with part-time.
Probably ought to, in these instances, I would think you ought to get them inoculated as soon as possible.
One of them, though, takes, what is it? It's a, it's a timeframe, it's like the first.
Oh, yeah, it's a three-series shot.
And then you wait another, so it's, it's like a year.
So, we'll be paying for it beyond if you authorize them all.
But you still get some protection as soon as you get the first shot.
Right, you do, you do, and it's.
That's how you'll feature it, the known issue for the bone.
Me too. I, I'd entertain a motion that we start this process.
Motion made.
A motion by Mr. Frye, a second by Mr. Loftus. Discussion on the motion, no? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Do whatever you need to, Buck. Correspondent information, you've got a very highly eloquent statement given on, we're out there at Three West Utilities at the last council meeting. Amanda and Katie both captured me, they sent photos of the ones they didn't print of the vein standing out in the side of my head. They, they printed the nice ones, so that's, I mean, nice ones if there are such a thing as nice.
Was that a Zeno strength moment?
You're out of order, Mr. Frye. Tenerton PSD and Hodgesville PSD FOIA enforcement petitions. Tom, you want to bring the group up to speed with what you did here this week?
Sure. State law requires FOIA responses to be replied to within five days of, of their delivery, or the, the public agency is duty to decline the response, cite lawful reasons for the declination. Neither Tenerton nor Hodgesville PSDs did either, and we let it go for probably three weeks. And I filed against both Tenerton and Hodgesville PSDs and Terry Gould, since he is the custodian of records, and statute states that you have to, the way I read the statute, you've got to name the custodian of records in the suit as well. So, he was named as custodian for both Tenerton and Hodgesville. Those were filed, there was a chance that they would have been heard today, but Judge Hall reads the statute a little bit differently than I do. So, those have been set for hearing on December 5th at 3:15. I spoke with the judge's law clerk earlier this week, and he indicated that, that Mr. Gould had indicated to him that, that our, that the suit might be mooted by that point, meaning that Mr. Gould will turn over what we're asking for. If that's the case, fantastic, you know, we're early after is, is this information.
Are we to understand, then, that Mr. Gould has had conversation with the court?
Well, he's, just for scheduling, for, he spoke with the clerk, not the, not with the judge.
All right.
And I spoke with the clerk ex parte, I mean, that's not, that's not usual.
Sure.
Sure. Just be aware, I have a surgery on Monday, so I hope I will be in a position, I hope I will be in a condition to appear.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, we might have to, you might have to dust off the wall license to appear.
It's not dusty yet, it's still current.
It is a, I, no comment. Every, I mean, this is an extraordinarily.
It's not, take any comment.
It's a very, I'm just. The hearing will be incredibly for Funktree, if it lasts longer than five minutes, it'll be shocked.
Yeah.
Because their duty under the statute is clear, and their failure to fulfill their duty under the statute is equally clear, and there's really not much to it than that. So, we'll see what happens on the 5th. If not before, if they turn over everything before, obviously.
And so we are clear about this. We have been asking for this information for years.
Informally, I mean, the formal FOIA request was dated 11th.
But when the 33 West Utility Matters came up, and part of our response has to be who's system has the financial integrity to undertake the project, we were trying to compare apples with apples. And when that information is not going to be shared by somebody that says, oh, we can do this project, it's like, well, maybe we should be able to weigh in and try to determine, and let the county commission determine with accurate financial information who can really do the project.
Well, I'll say this also, if the court were to proceed to consider the question of sanctions against these entities for their kind of willful failure to comply with the statute, you know, I think it is certainly probative that, that both Tenerton and Hodgesville have a long history of being chronically non-compliant with the requirements of state law in filing reports to the Public Service Commission to the point where they have to be named as respondents in PSC actions with some regularity to ensure that their, their statutorily mandated reports are filed. So, you know, all this is going to be, you know, brought up, and, you know, I've made a motion for costs, you know, associated with the action, and we'll see what the judge does.
We can't get paid for sewage.
Well, that's not, that's.
A minute to reflect that Gene Frye says you can't squeeze his blood out of a tourniquet. Thanks, Gene, that's a good motion. Okay, we'll, we'll continue to plug along and get where we need to be. Consent agenda consists singularly of the approval of the minutes of our last meeting on October 17. I would entertain a motion, gentlemen, that we approve those minutes.
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Frye.
Second.
A second by Mr. Loftus. If there's not any discussion on the motion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to strategic issues, and I think we have talked here in the face about the 33 West sanitary side of things. Buck, you are asking for pay, a pay increase due to new Class II certification on the part of Steve Reed.
Yes.
Is that a, remind us what that involves paywa, pay-wise?
Seventeen to nineteen.
Seventeen to nineteen dollars an hour. So, your request is that the board recognize as part of our practice, we have a new schedule for our operators, Mr. Reed has completed his Class II certification. We are committed to keeping our employees, especially the plant operators, it's Buck's recommendation that we promote Mr. Reed to nineteen dollars an hour. I'd entertain a motion that we approve that request. I have a motion by Mr. Loftus.
Second.
Mr. Frye, I have a second to the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question.
When does it go into effect?
There is discussion.
Well, just a little bit.
December, December 1, or are you asking, when, when did he complete it?
Well, he got his certificate this week.
I, I think since we're at November 21, December 1, sounds, sound good enough. That gives Ambi a little time to do what she needs to do from the payroll perspective, December 1, sound fair to you guys? So, the pay increase would be effective December 1, 2019.
How many Class II and III and IV are we, are we up to here now?
We have one, two Class I's. We have two Class III's, two Class II's. And we have got, we've got two people for the Class I's that hasn't got their certificate yet, because we don't have, they don't have their timing yet. They passed the test, they have to work.
Two of each.
O I T.
Four, three, two, one.
That is right, isn't it?
Yeah. Dave and Jason are the Class III's. Donnie's Class II.
Okay, Donnie, okay, there's only one Class III. No, I'm a Class III. Yeah. I think there's two, two, two.
Two, 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 and two.
So, we've got enough people on the pipeline to keep it flowing.
Yes.
Any further questions or discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Stormwater, Spring Street?
Yes.
Kevin has completed all the pipe work down there.
We just got to put those neat little inlets in.
He's put a couple of drop boxes in, and as soon as he gets street elevation, he can, he can do that.
And then Jerry's, Brad's guys can finish the sidewalk, and we are in Lake Flint, right?
Right.
Very good. That's, so probably like this next week or so, is that, next week everybody's going to here now?
Yeah, probably not much will happen next week.
Glad we got all 17 newspapers here. Nothing gets done at the City of Buchanan during the. Anything else on the Stormwater fronts? Board member comments and announcements. Mr. Frye, start with you.
Nothing.
We've chatted enough?
This is.
Mr. Loftus?
Nothing.
I've got nothing, other than to wish everybody the happiest possible Thanksgiving. We're only a week off from Turkey Day, and we, you know, as an organization, we're only as good as the people that work for us. And we have such excellent employees, both the plant employees, the line employees. I'll be delivering comments tonight at the council meeting, and then sending copies of the comments to all of our employees. But we, we couldn't do it without you guys, and truly mean that. So, that's all I've got. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn at 5:05.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion for adjournment in a second. Call for the question. All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're out of here. All right, folks, it's 7 o'clock, we're going to get started. We welcome you all to join us for tonight's city council meeting, and we'll start with our traditional moment of silent reflection, keeping those who need it the most in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers. Mr. Miles Paul, would you be so kind as to lead us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're glad you're all are with us this evening. We actually have two folks separately that we want to recognize, and the first guy is just one of our most favorite people, longtime veteran who has more recently become very highly engaged in civic affairs. I'd ask that Mr. Miles Paul join me up front here for a recognition. Could you come up with there, Mr. Mayor? You want to join us for this?
No, I just want to watch his face.
You're welcome to join us. We're so glad you can be with us tonight. All right, this is a mayor's proclamation. Whereas the council of the City of Buchanan resolved during its regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor residents of our Buchanan Uptown community who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism. And whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire department, Stockard Youth and Community Center, and police department, but had not until recently formally recognized others who generally perform many other acts of service and kindness. And whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city deemed it to be reasonable and appropriate to henceforth recognize our community's most giving volunteers, with previous honorees of the Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, that is, best award, being Amanda Hayes, Zachary Mutsler, Robin Keough, Shirley Tinney, Bill Nicholson, Dr. Joseph Reed, Dr. Paul Richard, April Keating, Brad and Kim Linsicum, Dr. Kathy Gregg, Stan Rexrode, Rich Clemmons, and Buchanan Elks Lodge Number 1736. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the City of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's 14th recipient of our Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, that's our best award, for November of 2019, to be Miles Paul. Mr. Paul, a resident of Rigger Avenue, has long been a member of our Frank B. Bartlett Post Number 7 and VFW Post 3663, and a participant in many events and activities involving our youth and our veterans, including the featuring of his several military Jeeps in Veterans Day parades, and delighting our youth with his Jeep tours of Buchanan during our annual Stockard Children's Festivals. Recently, he helped protect us all from the zombies during our inaugural zombie walk supporting the Colonial Theater. Simply stated, Miles Paul has helped us all in our BU community to be better and happier in many ways. Mr. Paul took up Jeep restoration following his wife Alice's passing on April 1, 2016, Alice and Miles Paul having reared 17 children. I direct that a permanent placard be placed upon our city's new best bench recently installed in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Miles Paul and all past and future honorees of our city's best award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guests, Miles Paul, his family, friends, admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family, during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 21, 2019, as we honor our city's 14th recipient of our best award. We all wish Mr. Paul the very best as he continues to work hard for our BU community. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself, and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others, as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including the 14th recipient of our city's best award, Mr. Miles Paul, given under my hand and the official seal, right there it is, of the City of Buchanan this 21st day of November 2019, and it's signed by me. We sure congratulate you, sir. Get some makeup. You want some makeup up here? Is that what you were? He's a toughie to please.
Looks good.
All right. Have you looked here real quick? One, two, three. Grab one more.
Did you drive the Jeep?
One, two, three. Thank you.
And same thing.
Not surprised.
It's too cold for the Jeep tonight, isn't it? Not really.
It'll go anywhere.
One more shot. One more shot after that double whammy.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, put the Jeep, you put the Jeep to sleep for the winter. You've got four of them now, right? Four Jeeps.
Five.
Five Jeeps.
Yep.
And each one symbolizes different brands of the military service, right? Isn't that correct?
Right.
Yep. And you took this hobby up of Jeep restoration when your wife passed on about three and a half years ago. That's what you told me. That was your new sort of thing that you took up. Yeah, yeah, that's terrific. Well, we appreciate you. Thanks so much.
You bet.
Yep. Have a great evening. You're welcome to stay, but I'd rather go home if I were you. I'll just spin around here instead of going back behind. Okay, this is, this is a two-for-one-er. You know, it's like, you know, every once in a while you go to McDonald's and you can get a two-for-one-er, or Wendy's or Burger King, I should name all the restaurants now, right? Somebody will think. Would Mr. Dave Waggon please join me up front?
How are you, sir?
Fine, and you?
David, and you?
Doing okay, thank you.
Hi, David.
Dave.
Whereas David L., Dave Waggy, a lifelong Buchanan resident, has generously supported the ongoing capital campaigns for both our city's Stockard Youth and Community Center and our Colonial Theater projects, contributing twenty-five hundred dollars to help advance our community's realization of construction of the long-planned new multi-use building in Stockard and restoration of the Colonial Theater, both facilities bringing enormous value that will benefit the youth of our BU community. And whereas Dave Waggy has been a regular attendee of and contributor to our now annual Battle of the Bands event held during Fall Fest in the Colonial Theater, and has recognized the importance of establishing a performing arts venue for our young people to perform in Buchanan. And whereas that, Dave Waggy is a proud veteran, having served as company commander of an aircraft maintenance company in Korea, and is a proud member of our American Legion and VFW posts, also retiring from Core Heart Refractories following thirty-two years in management. And whereas our Buchanan Upstate Community appreciates and values the efforts, energy, and dedication of some of our finest residents and supporters, and wishes to honor and commend them in their continued positive mission, particularly supporting the youth of our community. And whereas our city now desires to recognize Dave Waggy by bestowing upon him our city's highest honor with the Ambassador's Award. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the City of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim Friday, November twenty-two, twenty nineteen, we wanted to be able to give you a full day or so. To be Dave Waggy Day throughout our City of Buchanan. To further memorialize Dave Waggy's devotion to and affinity for our Buchanan Upstate Community, I further now hereby bestow upon him the Buchanan Ambassador Award, becoming one of the very few recipients and honorees of this most prestigious award. Appropriately, I direct the installation of a permanent placard upon the Ambassador's Bench on each Main Street in front of our city's Stockard Center to permanently honor Dave Waggy, bearing the inscription, "The Ambassador's Bench," honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan. Additionally, Dave Waggy shall be forever recognized upon the Tree of Giving in the entrance to our Stockard Youth and Community Center and in the lobby of our Colonial Theater. I further urge all of our residents to greet our community's most honored citizen, Dave Waggy, his family, friends, admirers, and all members of our city government family on his special day, given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Buchanan this twenty-first day of November twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much.
Now, everybody gets to take our pictures.
As Mike Ross said when he was up here, just take as many as you'd like.
Take as many as you like.
I'm going to see your more.
Go this way?
Yes.
Are we this way now? Is that good? Boy, everybody's a script manager here, a director, I tell you.
Brain flatter than I am.
Yeah, that's right. Sanders would normally get us right, right?
He does. Yeah, one, two, three.
Do a few more right here. One, two, three. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Couple more over here.
Couple more over here.
Sorry, pal. Here's one.
This is Waggy, we're engaged now. We've been holding hands for like five minutes.
That's a fun part, right?
Yeah. Warm hands, cold heart, is that the way it is?
Warm hands, warm heart, cold feet, you sweetheart.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
I'd like to thank you and the city council and Creed Buchanan for your leadership and what you've done to the city. If you drive through the town, you get a, it's a beautiful city, you get a warm, welcoming feeling, and when you drive down Main Street, you can see it's a progressive, vibrant community and shows good leadership.
That's very nice of you to say, and we'll share that with our employees. Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Now, we've got a couple of other, well, one specific, particular guest to recognize, and then we'll introduce you to our Wesleyan students who are here this evening. Evelyn Sussky has asked to talk about the Barnes Dance. I'm curious.
That's why, that's why I put a dance, people don't know. I'm from Baltimore, for those of you that don't know, and we do strange things. Actually, Barnes is the name of a man, and he created a, an intersection with lights, which, it's called, it can also be called the scramble, and it's an intersection where car traffic halts a bit so pedestrians can cross in all directions, including diagonally. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I've noticed on Main and Locust, for those of us who do a lot of walking, the timing is very short to get across the street. I'm a brisk walker, and I can barely make it. And I think of somebody that's handicapped that can't move too fast, cars like to go before the light changes. And I'm just bringing it up as a, just to throw it out there. The Barnes Dance gives you a couple extra minutes, but you can either go diagonal or across either way, so like this says, diagonally or across. You don't have to wait to go across and then wait for the light to change to go the other way. I've tried to do the Barnes Dance, and I barely make it. And, please close your ears. I'm sure you're not supposed to jaywalk here, but do the Barnes Dance, because it's faster to get, like, if you're going from the senior center and I'm going to CVS, the Barnes Dance is much easier to do than wait for the four corners. So it's just an idea that I'm throwing out there. I do think there should be a couple more seconds added to what we already have, because you do have to walk briskly, and summertime when you have tours, they don't want to walk as fast. And I'm not suggesting you hold it up for twenty seconds, but maybe like about four or five additional seconds in the summer. Or consider the Barnes Dance.
Well, we will, we'll have Jerry Arnold and Matt Gregory look into it and report back to us, and we'll see what we can do, Mrs. Sussky.
Just a thought, just a thought.
Yep, thanks for bringing it to our attention. We've got several Wesleyan students with us tonight. Now, here's the drill, guys. What we require is that you stand and face the camera and give us your name and your hometown and your major course of study. Bonus points if you say your favorite class is business law. So who wants to go first?
We encourage honesty here.
Yeah, that's true. There's integrity to the process.
Baseball player.
Hi, I'm Bryce Jones, I'm from Axon, Maryland, so I'm not from West Virginia, psychology major, and McCully, who I had last year, was favorite professor.
I'm Todd Burner, I'm from Parkersburg, West Virginia, and my major is sports business and favorite class is business law.
I'm Amanda Watson from Cranberry Township, Pennsylvania. I'm a criminal justice and social justice major with a pre-law minor, and actually, my favorite class, no offense to you, was criminal law and procedure with Gregory back there.
I can't fix tickets, yeah.
Hello, I'm Charles Wolfong, I'm from Hillsboro, West Virginia, and I'm a nursery major, elementary and Wesleyan, and I've not had the honor to have Mr. McCully, but I'm sure he's a great guy.
See it deep in your eyes.
I'm Zachary Pace, I'm from Brownsville, Pennsylvania, and I'm a history and secondary education major. I've also not had Mr. McCully either.
Anybody else from Wesleyan this evening?
My name's Ledger Partridge, I'm from New Art Delaware, I'm a sport business major, and favorite class, I don't know, same McCully, just cut it.
Good fallback. We're glad you all could be here. If you have any questions during the course of the meeting.
One more.
I'm sorry. I wondered where you were.
My name is Norm McCull, I'm from Athens, West Virginia, I'm a biochemistry student, business minor, and my favorite class is business law.
Thanks, Shouse. Glad you're on here. If you have any questions during the meeting, just give a shout. Department of Board reports, first up is Callie Cronin-Sams, our information coordinator and grant writer researcher. How's it going, Callie?
Great, thank you. So I've got the, the work, it's needle in your pocket, starting out with press releases and actually have Facebook posts up here first, you can see, take a look at, worked through every single one, but definitely reached a lot of people with the information about how to get businesses to go ahead and participate in the adventure in Toyland theme this holiday season. We do have those in City Hall as well, or you can get them online. We'll probably reshare that post soon so that anyone that missed it the first time can see that again. And again, the downtown decorating committee, and chaired by Pam Buckler, is looking for businesses who are interested in participating with that theme and decorating their storefronts, and we hope everyone downtown is able to get involved. And that is the same theme that goes along with, there will be the adventure in Toyland in December, let's see, we'll go over to the back on the fourteenth, so that will be coming up as we get ready to celebrate the holidays. We also shared, of course, Captain, now Captain Clinton Davis, and being promoted to that rank with the Buchanan Fire Department, and then reminding everybody that City Hall will be closed, but to come out and enjoy the Veterans Day Parade. So those were some of the posts that got the most views over the past couple of weeks. Also, some information about the sewer line repair up on Highland Drive, and we'll have that street closed, but you can get to those residences from either end. Let's see, pretty much about what we typically see on the website, excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold coming on, I think. As usual, most of our traffic coming from social media. And then, let's see, did some grant research over the past couple of weeks, watched a webinar that Jay had wanted to check into on efficient wildlife resources, and how that might be able to help us do some mitigation on the stream beds there. We're still waiting word on the AML pilot, and then I have worked up on that WVU Physical Activity Grant Program and Safe Routes to Parks that was passed along by both Create Buchanan, and I think Laura and Tammy also passed that along as well. So I do have a proposal for that combined with a Safe Routes to Parks program for you to consider this evening. And wanted to remind everybody about the Women's Veterans Resource Fair coming up on Saturday as well.
Questions for Callie? We're not going to let her go because I'm going to ask council to bring F5 to the table. Any questions for Callie on any of her activities? We're still anxiously awaiting word on the abandoned mines land grant program. Council, I'd entertain a motion that we bring F5 to the table so that the Willow Meister can have some time with mommy tonight. A motion by Skinner and a second by Albaugh to bring F5 to the table. Is there any discussion on that motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. We now have F5 on the table. Why don't you tell us a little bit about this application through the WVU Physical Activity Safe Routes to Parks Program?
Yeah, they're two separate opportunities, but they have very similar goals for the funding as well as, they're both coming up with due dates, application deadlines in December. And so, as I mentioned, Create Buchanan and CJ Brylance had shared the WVU Physical Activity one, and I started taking a look at that, and at about the same time, found information about the Safe Routes to Parks Program. Both looking at how you can encourage community members to, obviously as it sounds, be more fit, and one of the ways that we can do that is by promoting activity on our streets and sidewalks and trails. And so, with this funding opportunity, I noticed that also, besides Create Buchanan, having talked about this for a while, within our comprehensive planning, twenty-twenty-five plan, in three separate areas, both economic and the recreational and the health, it brought up mapping out and then promoting and identifying some routes in the community for physical activity. And so, this is, these are both small amounts, the WVU's up to five thousand dollars, and the Safe Routes to Parks is twelve thousand five hundred. Worked with Jerry Arnold and Brad Hawkins on this a little bit as well, and got their input and support for it, and something where we feel we would be able to use a lot, a bulk of the money for painting and identifying the routes once we have mapped them out. We've brought together a coalition of folks who are interested in it to help choose the routes. I have some proposed routes, but would like them to be selected based on ones that everyone in the community feels would be the most useful. My thought being that they could go, they would all have the central hub of downtown Stockard, Jawbone Park, and Main Street, but then go out in three separate neighborhoods, each being perhaps a five K in length, so they could be used in training purposes, might lead to a Girls on the Run program at Stockard or at the Buchanan Academy. There'd be a lot of potential there, I think, for people who wanted to get more involved, especially in five K's, which we know are already popular here in town. So Robbie had mentioned too today at Create how we could kind of break them, level of difficulty, having some a little flatter, others being a little more rolly, so categorize them that way too. So, at any rate, looking to kind of combine these two into one package and to get more bang for our bucks. There's no required match, but of course, I'll talk about what we can bring to the table as far as the infrastructure we already have in place, as well as our streets and parks in kind labor and laying down the paint and putting up the, installing some signs and kiosks. So I guess I'm just asking for you to go ahead and support us putting an application to do so, if you'd be interested. In the case of the Safe Routes to Parks, we would also be asking Create to be the lead applicant, which they seem like they would be interested in doing today when I was there at their meeting, because you have to be in five oh one through C.
Super. Now, council, you've heard Callie's recommendations relative to these two separate grant applications. I would entertain a motion that we authorize her to prepare the necessary paperwork and if necessary for me to sign off on those applications.
Still there.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh, and I have a second, or a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on the motion or any further questions of Callie? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Callie, you got it.
Okay.
We thank you for bringing this to our attention. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
I don't believe so unless you have questions. We do, of course, have the wagon rides, I failed to mention that, so coming up in December, we'll have the wagon rides coming up on, well, the Christmas parade on the sixth, and then the wagon rides on the seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first.
Right ahead before Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm, we're going to do the menorah lighting.
The twenty-first?
I think it's the twen-, is that a Friday?
The twenty-first is a Saturday.
I think it's a Friday night. I think it's the twentieth.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll be sure to include that in the December stuff, but it's another event in Jawbone Park.
Sounds great.
Super. Thanks, Callie, appreciate it. Mr. Jerry Arnold, our Public Works Director.
Good evening. Mine is less of a report, more of a public service announcement, actually, this evening, but it's just something that, it's something that came up last week and felt compelled to mention it. Last Sunday evening, I was at home, and Callie sent an email to myself and Matt Gregory about her and Willow playing in the wooded area of the city park, and they came up on a used hypodermic angle laying there. So she, she's sent an email out to me, and Monday morning, we went up and did a sweep of the park. We actually found two used syringes, and picked them up. And the reason I bring this up is not to point fingers at anything, but to simply say, as a parent, do not assume any area is ever safe. No matter how good we are, you know, the playgrounds and the parks, be very vigilant about inspecting areas before you let your kids play. That could have been very tragic, and, you know, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. So we've become complacent as a society sometimes about certain areas, that it's okay to let our kids just go. Again, I can't stress enough, please be vigilant in inspecting those areas. Water Department report, they continue to work on the new electrical entrance to the plant. The Sewer Department, Crew One continues to work on the CJ Mark project out of Russian Fork, and Crew Two made a repair on Highland Drive. They did complete storm sewer work on Spring Street with the exception of setting elevation for the, the boxes on, ten street elevation, which I'll have to give them before they can set those boxes to grade. Street Department, we have been repairing and installing Christmas Day gear, if anyone happened to be locked up in their houses and... If anyone happened to be locked up in their houses and lost their head out of the door for the past week, week and a half. And Waste, there's nothing to report. The only thing under engineer, but engineering that's new from my last report. We did have the GPS equipment software purchase training last week that several of us attended. And just to say that that equipment is going to do tremendous things for us in our mapping department as part of being more, more efficient in mapping. And there's just, the instructor actually, the instructor actually said that she had offered this at our other classes, and believe it or not, we didn't have anyone to take their money, $100 to anybody that could, could tell her something that this technology could be used for.
Yeah.
So it's just that vast. And that's all I have.
Question for you on the parks issues. We've, I know it's a matter of coming up with the financing for it, but is this yet another opportunity for us to rethink the installation of security cameras with signage that we're never going to deter completely certain activities? But I think people would be, would think twice about some of the things they do in our parks if we, if we ended up more security camera.
We have, that park is covered pretty well except for the wooded area. It's really difficult to keep a natural area and surveil it as well, especially in every corner with, with the trees. So that would be kind of complex, I think, to cover with video. So I think, yes, you can always do this on there. But again, I think sometimes that it's one of those things that's just one person being very careless and would assign deter that. I guess that's the question.
Probably not.
I, I would err, again, my, my message would be, please be aware of what you're, what you're letting your kids, where you're letting your kids play, and inspect the area before you let them play. And I know that doesn't cover everything. We found them in sandboxes.
Oh, sure.
We found, you know, and it's not good because it's, it's anything.
What are we going to do when a kid goes to the park and, and snow on the ground and they want to make a snowball and throw it and pick up a needle? That's, that's pretty sad.
Well, that can be, like I said, anything, but just be aware.
It's sad in any place.
It is.
Tragic in many ways.
It is.
Thanks, Jerry. Any questions for Jerry before we let him go?
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Jerry. To all the guys, we appreciate them too. Next up is our Finance and Administration Director, Ambi Jenkins.
Okay, so CNN will give you the balances in your enterprise fund accounts for October 31st. Sanitary Board, $668,034, that's a money market in checking. They have $314,000 in CDs. Waste Collection Board has $669,166 in money market in checking and $57,546 in CDs. Water Board, $288,644 in money market in checking, and they have $958,000 in CDs. The ACP funds that are remaining in that fund is $16,253. Just as a side note, we just recently renewed one of the CDs at a local bank at a good interest rate. Consolidated Public Works Board, $115,801 in a cemetery CD at $230,348. Other things to report to you, Stocker Youth Southern's capital campaign, I didn't get balances at the last meeting because they had the elimination dinner. So their capital campaign at November 13th with the pledges included is $322,977. Once the revenues and expenses were counted, a profit of $6,352 was netted from the elimination dinner. We just too received a $5,000 donation yesterday from the Hill Stump Fund through First Community Bank. So that, that was a nice donation.
Did we get a $5,000 check from Warehouser as well?
I believe that Deborah did get a, and I may have counted that though in my grand total, but I didn't mention it. We also had firefighter written examination conducted here on November 16th. None of those candidates passed that, that written testing. However, we do have another round of written tests scheduled for December 7th, and that's for a different set of candidates that had to retake the physical agility test due to a equipment malfunction. The Housing Enforcement Officer, myself, attended the delinquent tax sales yesterday at the courthouse, Council Record Hall. They authorized us to bid on some properties that we've been having issues with in upkeep, and we also have some liens on them. We were successful and won the bids on two of those properties. So I'll report in more detail on that in the Housing Enforcement. But we do, the property owners still have the option to redeem that property for the bid price, and the city now though has some control of that at this point in the outcome of how to recoup some of the, of the liens and communications with the owners if they would come to redeem. The only other thing is a reminder that budgets that we worked on back in the spring build in a K increase for employees, and that'll take effect December 1st. And in the bills to be approved, the only one that really is worth noting is the one that we just paid for the tax redemption, $5,900 for those two properties. And that's all I have at this point. I think there's a couple things on the agenda that I'll have to.
That's up for questions, your Ambi, if you could. Ambi will yell back for you here in a few minutes. Thank you. Glad your voice is still sounding a little stronger.
It does.
Our Police Chief, Matt Gregory. How's it going, Chief?
Good, yeah.
Pretty good.
Just a few things to get to Council off one tonight. As you recall, we know at our annual trunk or treat event at the Public Safety Lot in conjunction with the Fire Department, other public safety agencies and other businesses and organizations throughout our community. Remarkable success once again, despite the weather. It was a little bit of a rainy evening, but we still saw 707 children come out to our event. So another great event. Just a couple days after that, on November 1st, Mayor and I went to Charleston to see our newest officer, Colin Coop, graduate from the West Virginia State Police Academy. Officer Coop is undergoing field training, and he's assigned to Corporals Wilson and O'Connor. He's in his third week of field training. Our field training program is a 12-week program. It follows a very structured format in that he follows four phases of training with these officers. He's assigned to our three-week rotational cycles where he takes on increasing amounts of responsibility as he continues through the field training program. So far, it's going very well. The field training officers complete daily evaluations on the officer called daily observation reports. That is submitted to myself and Lieutenant Loudon on a daily basis to review. We keep a master file with anticipation at the end of the 12-week training program. We have an exit conference where we go over each of the 60 evaluations during the field training program, as well as the completion of his training manual, which is about 155 pages. Covers all the foundational aspects that are established at the State Police Academy, as well as all the practical components for police operations. Couple of KLEA announcements. Myself and Lieutenant Loudon are just fresh back from Covington, Kentucky. We attended the annual conference this year just last week. Very good seminars. Moving forward, it gave us knowledge to continue with the self-assessment, which we are, we're about halfway through self-assessment at about 18 months that we've went through this process. I actually speak the language now, so my to-do list has just gotten longer and longer because I speak the language now and I'm not just staring into space when they're talking. Good news, I did meet with the Power DMS programmers. This was the first cycle that I'd actually started using, more in depth, the program itself that KLEA uses to assess. I'd read the best practices guide, but reading a manual and putting things into practice are two different things. So I met with the programmers just to make sure that I spoke that language as well and got a good report back that everything is coded correctly, so everything I've uploaded. And I just ran a report the other day, I've uploaded over 560 documents to Power DMS, and so it's being coded correctly according to the programmers. So we're continuing with that. In addition to that, the Policy Review Committee, which has been meeting on a monthly basis, just finished reviewing all of the policies. So it's, that is a major step forward at this point. So each policy has been properly vetted by our committee members and approved. And today I was actually able to issue the general order to the rest of the officers adopting the new manual. Even though we've been operating under it, we've been holding a number of trainings throughout the year just in preparation for the assessment and preparing proofs in accordance with that. We have officially adopted it now that it has been thoroughly vetted through the review process. So that's a major step forward. And as you recall, I've talked about KLEA being a two-step process, the first being making sure that all of your policies are in compliance with the standards. We feel that they are at this point in time. And so the second phase is proofing. And I've been, as kind of in tandem with the review process throughout 2019, I've been developing a full year of proofs for the 2019 year, which I should have by the end of the year. KLEA likes trending, and so our focus moving into 2020 is to establish a second year of proofs for each of the 180 Tier One standards for accreditation, which we will anticipate working on. Of course, time-sensitive standards start in January. We have a number right out of the gate, the first of the year, that we'll begin constructing. Then as we get into summer, where I have a lot more time with our pro-officer being out and able to work as well, I'll, I gather a lot of the non-time-sensitive standards and have a second year of proofs. We do anticipate joining a PAC. A PAC is an accreditation support network. Unfortunately, our closest PAC is based out of Columbus, Ohio. And so we're going to make contact with that agency in the winter, early spring, and begin the process of establishing this network with the ultimate goal being a mock assessment, which we'll anticipate having in summer. The summer mock assessment will be another test of not only the first phase of policies, but our second phase are proofing, and we'll have two years of proofs at that point. Once we get through the mock assessment and make any changes or additions, additions that is recommended by the assessors, we'll move into the final phase of self-assessment in preparation for full accreditation at the beginning of 2021. And that is, the first step are web assessments. KLEA assigns assessors to look at your, your files remotely. That is done 40 days in advance of the onsite assessment. The onsite assessment, they'll send two assessors from beyond this region. So our region's the mid-Atlantic region, which is comprised of, West Virginia's the northernmost state, and we go as far south as South Carolina. So all the states in between. We'll have assessors that are outside of the mid-Atlantic region. Usually they try to send somebody from the other side of the country. So we'll have a couple of assessors come to Buchanan in the beginning of 2021 for onsite assessment. Of course, I'll, I'll keep everybody in the loop as we get closer to that. They're usually here two or three days where they review our files in person, they observe our operations, they hold public hearings, and make the final determination for a final report to the KLEA Commission, which if all goes well, we would anticipate our actual accreditation award coming at the Winston-Salem Conference in July of 2021. So we're well on track for that. We continue to put a lot of work into it, but we are moving forward with that in that regard. And then finally, just shifting gears off of KLEA. The Police Department is going to host a number of trainings. Most of them are internal in the month of December. A lot of them focuses on our annual training requirements for KLEA. But one in particular is on December 10th. We are partnering with some of our friends at the hospital to sponsor a Stop the Bleed class. This will be open to not only our officers, but the public safety personnel. We've also testified with Ambi and Jerry to invite other city personnel as well. So very busy month coming up with training and closing out the 2019 year as we enter December. Mayor, that's all I have tonight, unless there's any questions.
Anybody have a question for Chief Gregory?
Matt, you know, it's easy for we KLEA committee members to show up once a month for an hour, hour and a half and chime in about, oh yeah, that's a good idea. Have you thought about this? But Matt's the guy in the trench. He's, he's the guy that's doing all the heavy lifting. And our hat's off to you. Granville has dropped out of the running for KLEA, and Charles Town hasn't done a whole lot more with theirs, I don't think.
Yeah, Charles Town actually entered, of course, we began the process, at least vetting the process in 2017. Became fully enrolled in April of 18. To my understanding and speaking with the Charles Town, they were actually in the process of two or three years prior to us.
Yeah.
And they're still in self-assessments.
Yeah. So with, the way things are going, we might very well be the second agency in all of West Virginia to have full professional accreditation. And an agency our size with 11, 12 total officers, that's pretty remarkable.
Yeah.
Our hat's off to you.
Definitely. Questions for Chief Gregory?
Thanks, Matt. Tell the guys we saved. Thank you, Mike.
Next up is our City Attorney, Tom O'Neil.
You referred to me earlier today as Dustin. I need to tell you. Said I should dust off my law license. Can you believe that, Mr. Johnson? I'll tell you.
You haven't forgotten it, have you, Mr. Johnson?
No, I, I just can't let things go. That's what all three of my wives said. What you got, boys, Bob?
We've been quite active the last few weeks with a number of items. I know this is the first time in a very long time, I don't think I necessarily have anything for the Council's approval under strategic today, but would note that a few things in correspondence information in particular, we are seeking enforcement of our FOIA requests made to the Tenerton-Hodgesville Public Service Districts. That has escalated to get the involvement of the Circuit Court, and we have a hearing scheduled in that matter on December 5th.
Do you know what time?
3:15.
3:15, December 5th.
Yep. In, in front of Judge, Judge Hall.
It's a Thursday.
Yep. Two weeks from today.
I think so.
Yeah, two weeks from today. So we'll be able to report back on council meeting that evening, how that, how that hearing goes. In addition, the isipity has obtained counsel to represent them as we pursue acquisition of that property for the Stocker Youth and Community Center expansion. That matter will become more complicated at this time, as I suspect. Other than a number of, a lot of other issues that have already been discussed, I think that's all that I've presented this time, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Tom?
Who's representing the?
Tenerton and Hodgesville?
A firm called Jenkins Fenstermaker and an attorney at Charles, whose name escapes me, although I think her letter is in the, oh, it's Allison, oh, Allison Farrell, who I've appeared against in the.
That's across the street. I think he was asking about the Tenerton-Hodgesville.
Oh, they're not represented by council.
As far as they're not.
Yeah.
They're not written up by any council.
Nope.
No answer has been followed.
No answer, no, no, no response to the FOIA request and no denial of our request on any lawful grounds cited.
What normally is the process once you go to the Circuit Court?
Well, if, if, if those entities do not comply with our FOIA request before the hearing, the Circuit Court can enter an order to compel them to disclose the requested information. If they do not comply with the court's order to compel, they're subject to sanctions for contempt.
And there's individuals that are actually signed in, or is it a?
Well, we had to, the way the complaint was brought, petition was brought, it named the public service districts individually, Hodgesville and Tenerton. It also named Mr. Gould individually as custodian of records for each. It also named Mr. Gould individually as custodian of records for each entity. So he maintains responsibility for complying with the request as a custodian of records.
How about the boards?
The boards aren't named, but I suppose, I mean, if the court wants to enter an order compelling the board to cooperate, good, but it's more probably more appropriate to tender the order against the management and not the board.
But they obviously should be aware of what we're doing.
Sure, I can't imagine they're not aware of what's going on.
In conversations with the county commission, they are trying to solicit the same information that we are.
Welcome to joiner.
There you go.
Well, that's what's amazing, that they have not received that information.
Well, I mean, I'd say this to Dave, you know, those organizations have a chronic, well, I'll put it this way, they have a long history of being named as respondents in actions by the Public Service Commission to compel production of information that they are legally responsible to file with the Public Service Commission. And it's like you can set your calendar by it, that they're going to get slapped with a petition by the Public Service Commission because they've filed an annual report that's months late, and then they do. I mean, you can look through, I mean, you know, if you investigate the archives, the Public Service Commission archives, you can see time and time and time and time again that both of those PSDs are, the PSC has to take official action against them to get them to comply with the law. And so we're not the only...
And that doesn't happen. That's what's unfortunate.
Well, I mean, there are a few kind of chronic PSD offenders around the state, but I'm not sure that any of them, you know, have to face this year in and year out all the time. So we are not the only exasperated entity, you know, on the block when it comes to these organizations.
We do want to recognize the compliance of the other public service districts.
Oh, certainly.
The Adrian Public Service District, the Mount Hope Water Association, and the Elkin Road Public Service District. We've been, when we started a couple of years ago asking for their minutes as we were sharing ours, they comply with those requests, they've attended our meetings, we treat them as the partners that we see them as being. So it's unfortunate.
With each of those entities, you know, we are their supplier, and they are each substantial customers of our water and sanitary sewer boards, and we have a good working relationship with those other entities, certainly.
And what is very frustrating from my perspective is that what is the impact of the delinquency that has been there for years, and then the Public Service Commission intervened, and we had to basically write off the late fees and the interest and so forth? And that is an impact on the system.
Well, that's correct, Dave. The water board in particular had to swallow tens of thousands of dollars?
Yes.
Of late fees and interest that were payable to it because of delinquent payments. And that ultimately impacts our ratepayers.
Right.
And it's really, it's quite unfortunate that, you know, that our ratepayers have to live the consequences of that intranqu diligence.
And the infrastructure still has not been addressed the way it needs to.
No, and that's clear through the annual reports themselves. The large fraction, the vast majority of the water that is sold to the Hodgesville PSD in particular is spilled onto the ground throughout their system. And when we were fighting, when we were facing near drought conditions, as we did a month, six weeks ago in particular, it's not a sustainable situation ultimately.
Let's keep it going, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Pressure on, Tom.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, correspondence and information, you got all kinds of things in your packet. There's the statement that I read about utilities last time. There's the greetings that we gave at the Harvard Graduate Schools Program a couple of weeks ago. There's the remarks that were given at the Veterans Day event in John Paul Park. Proclamations galore, one for the National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, one for American Indian Heritage Month. There's the proclamation for Shop Small Business Saturday on November 30th. There's a FOIA request from Black &amp; Veatch Corporation. There's a zoning form, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission on the Mount Air Mart Cooks. There's a letter from the Consolidated Public Retirement Board regarding employee contribution rates for budgetary purposes. There's a letter from Jenkins Finstermaker representing the Knights of Pithias in our forthcoming eminent domain case. There is the Tenerton PSD and Hodgesville PSD FOIA enforcement petitions that Tom alluded to during his report, and another proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month that we're recognizing throughout the month of November. The consent agenda consists of six items that I'll ask you to endorse in just a moment. It includes the minutes of our last regular meeting of October, actually, the last two regular meetings of October 17 and November 7, and the special meeting that we held on October 15. The approval of the building and wiring permits, the approval of the general funds payment of bills. We're still looking for an appointee to the Historic Landmarks Commission. I've not been able to come up with a name. If anybody has one, please let me know. The 2020 holiday schedule is in your packet, replete with election days. And then we're looking to accept the recommendation from the Director of Finance on December 16, which is a Wednesday, is that correct, Andy?
Yes.
She's asking that we close City Hall, is that for the entire day or part of the day?
Entire day. We have to shut down our server to migrate over into new window space. Then we have to have assistance room IT and our vendor. We want to continue to work in the office because we have some training, cybersecurity training.
Right.
I'm sorry, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday. Sorry about that. Okay, so there you have it. Those are the six matters that would comprise the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda. A motion by Mrs. Alba, may I have a second to her motion?
Second.
A second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question then. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign motion carries. Takes us down to our strategic issues. First, we've talked about this off and on for a couple of years, and you might recall, I think two meetings ago, we had Bobby Monroe with Datamax here. We're one of the very few cities that have not acted on that group's revenue enhancement collection services arrangement. Andy has done some checking about them with some of our sister cities, and I believe the reports have all come back positive. Is that right, Andy?
Yes, I think there was some concern with council that this might put an additional burden on to existing businesses. And from what I can understand, the other communities I've talked to, they said they have not received any complaints from any of the existing businesses. This is more targeted to wholesale-type companies that are coming and selling to those businesses, so they're picking up that BNO from them, those companies. Fairmont just started it, and I talked to that clerk at a conference I was at, and she said that they've just begun the process and they've not received, other than calls saying, why are we doing this now? They're explaining, well, you should have been paying BNO all along, it's we didn't realize you weren't here doing this.
Seven, eight hundred times bigger than us, but I understood they realized hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, like I explained to Mr. Monroe, we're a little different than other cities. We still have a million-dollar exemption. That applies to these wholesale. And the rate is lower for wholesale than it is retail, so I don't know. I don't know.
I think a million-dollar exemption makes a huge difference with us compared to other municipalities out. But I also believe there ought to be a level playing field in that if there are wholesalers out there or any business that's not complying with the BNO, they need to. But I do think a million dollars would make a huge exemption.
We won't see much money coming in.
I would entertain, I'm sorry.
So that being said, I mean, with discussing that with other municipalities, and they actually said the same thing, that it's not fair for your local businesses to pay it just because we don't know that they're coming in and that they're liable for that.
Lady and gentlemen of council, I would entertain a motion that we approve our entering into an agreement, authorizing you to sign the agreement with Datamax Corporation.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Thomas, and I have a second to his motion. I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign motion carries. Tom has crafted a letter for us to consider. As some of you already know, maybe everybody knows, there have been various cuts to county health departments. And we interact so often with Sue and Chris Garrett, Sue McKissick is the Director of the Upshur County Health Department. They, we work very closely with them. Sue also serves on our Housing Enforcement Board. She sent a letter to us asking for help, and we solicit the state's thoughts, trying to prevent any further curtailment of funding for county health departments. Tom just left, didn't he?
Yeah, he was the one that just left.
He's right, he could have just read yours. It's a very nice letter. Do you want to hit the highlights of that letter?
Do I?
Yeah. You crafted it, I just signed.
I borrowed heavily from Mrs. McKissick's draft. The letter is directed to Michael Cook, who's Director of the State Budget Office, with copies going to U.S. World Chief of Staff Mike Hall, Secretary Dave Party at Department of Revenue, and Secretary Bill Crouch with DHHR. It is an appeal to those individuals in their official capacities to protect local health departments from potential cuts that may, that other state agencies may be forced to face as state revenue numbers do not meet expectations based on the budgetary system. So it notes here in particular, let me just read the last couple of paragraphs. Local health departments are dealing with critical public health crises such as outbreaks of hepatitis C, illegal opioid use, outbreaks of HIV and other communicable diseases such as antibiotic-resistant tuberculosis, and foodborne illnesses. In addition, our local health departments are often the last line of defense against other directed threats against public health and our food supply. Local health is a basic government service that protects the health and well-being of all citizens. We hope the budget requests for local health departments would receive the same prioritization as those directed to law enforcement, as those organizations share a mission of protecting public health and safety continues to be signed by you.
It meets with my approval. I would recommend to council that I be authorized to send and mail back. I have a motion of that effect.
I'm sorry.
A motion by Mr. Thomas, can I have a second to his motion? Mrs. Alba has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, trying to, again, protect our county health department, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign motion carries. There is a, I don't think F3 is now necessary, but at the time we were preparing the agenda, it might have been necessary. We had been discussing some tweaks, not a gutting, just some minor changes to our employee medical prescription program. And after having a good conversation with Chris Tony, our plan administrator, we've concluded that we don't need to make any changes at this time. Mr. Skinner and Mr. Thomas both serve on the Insurance Committee with Andy Jenkins and myself. Have I spoken correctly, gentlemen?
Summarize that correctly.
So can we just table this for now?
Sure. I move we table.
We're going to look at it again about the end of January and report back to council probably in February. So we'll, I have a motion to table. Can I have a second to his motion?
Second.
A second by Skinner, a motion by Thomas, second by Skinner. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call for the question to table F3. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign motion carries. F4. I don't know that we need to say a whole lot about this matter. We've been talking a lot about the Route 33 West utilities. I can tell you, consistent with what was discussed at the Sanitary Board meeting today, we have had renewed, I think you could characterize them as fruitful, intense discussions with J.F. Allen, who has also, by the way, met with the Shaw Brothers and the Marx. And they are probably the three biggest potential developers located upon the north and south sides of US 33 West. We believe that we will very likely enter into an accord, an agreement of some sort with them whereby our Sanitary Board, they oversee the sewer operations of the city, and our Water Board will contribute some funding toward the development of the utilities on both the north and south side, beginning with the commencement of the construction season about March 1. Trying to remember the, Jerry, the young man's name who spoke?
Tyler.
Tyler Beadie. I always want to call him Ryan. Sorry, Tyler. But anyway, there's been lots of emails. We did receive a letter that was not received until right before the Sanitary Board meeting today, so we couldn't have it on the agenda. But we will share that with council during our next meeting on December 5. And I think you can anticipate that at the December 12 meeting of the Water Board and at the December 19 meeting of the Sanitary Board, this matter will come to both boards' attention, and I think we will be preserving our utility territory to the immediate west of our corporate limits. Jerry, is there anything you want to add to that, or Andy, either one? Have we said enough without saying too much? Tom, you were there also.
We're, yeah, I think there is the potential, there is a potential new opening or resolution, but in the meantime, we're going to continue down our current path.
I think it's going to be incumbent upon the developers to take the lead with the county commission and say, we're going to work with Buchanan on realizing these utilities. Is that fair?
I think, yeah, I think it's an important thing to note is that the north side, the north side sewer extension is continuing the pace. It will, that's not going to face any hangups in the near future.
Very good. The last matter for strategic action is F5, and I think we've already done that.
You already did that.
We already did some other strategic stuff. Got most time for you to sing your favorite song, Mr. Skinner. Comments and announcements. Mary Alba, what do you have for?
I just want to say thank you for everyone who come out and supported the veterans. It was one of the nicest, different variety of things going on on Veterans Day. I appreciate the press for covering it. You all did a wonderful job. Thank you. And everybody that's contributing to the donations to the Honor Guard Band, we appreciate that also. And the youth are awesome, and Jerry let us decorate his hayride?
Haywagon.
Haywagon, haywagon. And it was great. And a lot of good, great things going on in Buchanan.
I think so too, Mary.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Pam Buckle is under the weather. Mr. Rollins is still recovering from his last week's surgery. Mr. Skinner?
You have a very long letter, so I'll yield to you.
Let me get my coat on first.
Mr. Thomas. The December the 7th, there's a Whisker Ball, which is a fundraiser for homeless animals, pet doors, and so forth, and cats.
And our dog park.
Yep. And that's December the 7th. I think that's Pro-Harvard Day also. Also, the end of the month, Mayor McCauley said he will participate in the Spelling Bee again.
again.
That's in January.
Yeah. Did I say December?
You said the end of the month.
End of January.
Yeah.
And I may enter, I've never lost a Spelling Bee in my life, but I've only won one.
We're going to hear that.
That's in fourth grade.
He was 17.
Better watch it, Dave, you'll be the first one out.
Yeah, and I wish everybody a safe and very happy Thanksgiving, and celebrate it with your families.
I have a short statement about Thanksgiving that I like to deliver every year, so you guys can have that. Thanksgiving is now but a week off, and I am thanking for my family and many friends. Next Thursday morning, I'll drive again to my old hometown of Wheeling and celebrate the holiday with my mom and Sister Erin and her family. I'm overjoyed that my son Connor will accompany me. Of all the things of this past year for which I'm most thankful, it's the turnaround for Connor. Where there's hope, there's the possibility for fully recovering from whatever plagues us. We all can help to provide hope for those who need it most. To those who've lost someone recently, we're there with each of you as you try hard to proceed on without your loved ones. We miss Sean Tucker, Roy Pettit, Tappan Squires, Matt Himes, and April Keating, among many others. They were all prominent figures who worked hard with us to make our community better. Those who have lost loved ones recently go through what you've heard me call first time itis, that especially tough first of everything without your loved ones, holidays, birthdays, vacations. I choose to think, as a guy who's perhaps not as religious as many of my friends, that our loved ones' spirits are still with us. At least I find myself comforted by that belief. We're thinking about our friends who are battling illness this Thanksgiving, close friends, like Larry Brown, our own CJ Rylands, and so many others who are battling cancer or other serious health challenges. We're very mindful of those who protect us, the members of our armed forces who can't be with their families. We are mindful that Veterans Day was just 10 days ago, and we thank every person who is now serving or who has ever served our great nation. And yes, we are acutely aware of others who can't be with us this holiday season, who are incarcerated, residing in nursing homes, or otherwise institutionalized. We pray for all of our lost and challenged souls to be found and to have their challenges alleviated. I'm thankful for this body of people on our city council, who I know are each committed to improving our community, to moving this forward, to making this very special place even better for everyone who lives here. I am so very thankful for our amazing, excellent city employees who serve us so well and who I sincerely appreciate and respect more each day. They are all talented, dedicated, and creative people who put their hearts and souls into their work to make us better. We couldn't accomplish anything without them. I'm thankful for our growing vibrant community and our many contributing citizens who help us achieve so many things. We have a volunteer base here like no other town in West Virginia, people who give so generously of their time and resources every single day. Thanks to each of you. This holiday is not just about being reflective of how blessed we are to give thanks, but it's also about reaching out to those who have had more than their fair share of challenges, who don't have as much as others of us to be thankful for. We know families whose breadwinners have been displaced. We know families who've been hurt, disrupted due to family members who are victims of substance abuse. We know persons who are challenged by health, age, infirmity. We know too many lonely souls, often are elderly. Please, I implore you, take a moment out of your day in the next week to reach out to someone who will be uplifted by your token act of kindness. Knock on a door to, drop off a pie to a neighbor, be randomly liberal with your smiles, engage folks around you. You just never know how much something seemingly so small can matter so much to someone else. Do it for yourself. I guarantee you'll feel better about life if you go out of your way to be kind to others. Of all of the attributes that we may manifest as human beings, I believe the most important one is the virtue of kindness. We truly are all in this together. Thanks for attending our meeting, we hope to see you next time, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Counsel, I would like to have a very short, five-minute executive session. I would entertain a motion that we're going into executive session. Thank you, no decisions will be made.